Meeting calls to order. Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
We are now on to an invocation by Reverend Dr. Marcia Grace.
Are you ready? Is it on?
Yes.
Let us pray. For unto us a child is born, unto us a son is given, and the government shall be upon his shoulders; and he shall be called Wonderful Counsel, Mighty God, Everlasting Father, Prince of Peace. Lord, as we only come unto you, we pray, God, for your presence to rest rule and abide in this place. We pray, Holy Spirit, that you would rest rule and abide upon and rest upon each and every member, Lord God. We pray right now, in the blessed name of Jesus, we pray for this city, Lord God. We pray for these council persons, Lord God. We pray, Lord God, for the mayor. We pray, Lord God, for the deputy mayor. Lord God, we pray for each and every person. We pray, Lord God, that your peace shall rest rule and abide within this place, that it shall rest rule and abide within this city. We pray, oh God, hallelujah, that they will rest upon your shoulders, that as we stand on your shoulders, that, Lord God, we will emulate you, that, Lord God, we will be fair, we will be impartial, and that justice shall prevail for all. We pray, Lord God, for impartiality. We pray, Lord God, for strength. We pray, God, for guidance. We pray, God, for your covering. We pray, Lord God, for your power. Lord God, and we pray, Lord God, for your spirit to rest, to rule, to abide, to lead. And we pray, God, that we be humble enough to submit unto your will, unto your way, and unto your agenda. Let not our agenda be different from yours. But, Lord God, let us come together, Republican, Democratic, whatever it is. Let us all be, for the people, united, standing together, building a community that is strong, that is fervent, and that shall prevail. And, Lord God, we thank you for the colors of the rainbow, for, Lord God, we too are representation, for we are many colors, we are many, we are of many ethnicities, we are of many differences, but, Lord God, we rest in a rule and abide under one God, the Almighty, the Creator God. In the matchless name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend. Please stand for a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, P.L., 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The reorganization meeting notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press and the Coaster on December 9, 2022, and posted on the bulletin board at the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. At this time, Municipal Court Judge Ronald Tropoli will be swearing in of the newly elected officials. First up, we have the swearing in of Councilmember Angela Abez Anderson.
And would you raise your right hand, please? He'd have to me. I, Angela Abez Anderson.
I, Angela Abez Anderson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of City of Asbury Park Councilmember.
Of the office of the City of Asbury Park Councilmembers.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Councilwoman, congratulations. Okay, Councilwoman, if you would, please. You would sign there, and this way we'll make it official, and then you can join the panel.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I will take it. We are now on to the swearing in of Mayor John Moore.
Thank you.
Please raise your right hand. He'd have to me. I, John Moore.
I, John Moore.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state. Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully, impartially.
Impartially. And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of City of Asbury Park Mayor.
The City. The City of Asbury Park.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
It's an all-in-one.
It's an all-in-one.
Mayor, congratulations. Okay, Mr. Mayor, please join the panel. I will hand this up to you.
We are now on to the nomination of Deputy Mayor.
I nominate Amy Quinn.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Angela Abez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We are now into the swearing in of Deputy Mayor by Municipal Court Judge Ronald Tropoli.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
I, Amy Quinn.
I, Amy Quinn.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
The Office of City of Asbury Park Deputy Mayor.
Of the Office of City of Asbury Park Deputy Mayor.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Deputy Mayor, if you would, please. Wait, we're ready. You sign your little forms, and I will make it official. Okay, congratulations. There you go. Please join the panel. Thank you.
Mayor, with your permission, we wanted to move up Resolution 2023-21, the resolution appointing Deputy Mayor.
Okay.
So, we have Resolution 2023-21, resolution appointing Deputy Mayor Amy Quinn. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Councilmember Abez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Thank you.
We are now on to Consent Agenda. All matters listed on Consent Agenda are presented collectively to the City Council and will be considered for approval with one vote. These matters are considered to be routine in nature, and there will be no individual discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by one or more council members as to any particular item, then said item shall be removed from Consent Agenda and considered separately. On Consent Agenda, we have Resolutions 2023-1 through 2023-20. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Abez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We are on to individual resolutions. Resolution 2023-22, resolution providing for 2023 temporary budget appropriations.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Abez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-67, resolution appointing Municipal Court Judge Ronald Tropoli.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Abez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-23, resolution appointing Frederick C. Ruffetto Esquire to serve as municipal attorney for the city and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional legal services associated therewith.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Abez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-24, resolution appointing P.F.K. O'Connor Davies to serve as auditor for the city and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional services associated therewith.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Abez Anderson.
Abstain.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-25, resolution appointing T&amp;M Associates to serve as municipal engineer for the city and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional engineering services associated therewith.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Abez Anderson.
Abstain.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-26, resolution pursuant to NJSA 40:48-1, authorizing the city engineer to perform services as designated to the city manager for review of development permits in any area of special flood hazard.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Abez Anderson.
Abstain.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-27, a resolution appointing Archer and Grinder PC to serve as redevelopment council and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional services associated therewith.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Abez Anderson.
Abstain.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-28, resolution appointing Archer and Grinder PC to serve as bond counsel for the city and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional legal services associated therewith.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Abez Anderson.
Abstain.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-29, a resolution appointing Mayor Ziti and Falcon to serve as redevelopment council and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional services associated therewith.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Abez Anderson.
Abstain.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
No.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-30, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Asbury Park to enter into a professional services agreement with Public Resources Advisory Group for the provision of pilot RAB administration.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Abez Anderson.
Abstain.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
No.
Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Can I change that?
Yeah. Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-31, resolution awarding a contract for U.S. Environmental Protection Agency Brownfields Community Wide Hazardous Substances Assessment Grant and Petroleum Community Wide Assessment Grant Service to Brownfield Redevelopment Solutions Incorporated.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Abez Anderson.
Abstain.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-32, resolution appointing Acacia Financial Group to serve as financial advisors for the city and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional services associated therewith.
Set, move it.
Second.
Councilmember Abez Anderson.
Abstain.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-33, a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional appraisal services to BRV valuations, Pamela J. Brodowski.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Abez Anderson.
Abstain.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-34, resolution appointing G.Gem Insurance Agency to serve as an insurance brokerage consultant, risk manager, and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional services associated therewith.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Abez Anderson.
Abstain.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-35, a resolution appointing law offices of Parker McKay to serve as Oprah counsel for the city and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional legal services associated therewith.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Abez Anderson.
Abstain.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-36, resolution authorizing the award of a contract to the firm Kyle &amp; McManus Associates to perform professional affordable housing planning and/or consulting services.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Abez Anderson.
Abstain.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-37, a resolution appointing the law offices of Genova Burns LLC to serve as labor counsel for the city and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional legal services associated therewith.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Abez Anderson.
Abstain.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-38, a resolution appointing Community Grants Planning and Housing LLC to serve as affordable housing administrative agent for the City of Asbury Park.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Abez Anderson.
Abstain.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
No.
Resolution 2023-39, a resolution appointing the firm of Serenian Edwards &amp; Nolan LLC to serve a special affordable housing council for the City of Asbury Park.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Abez Anderson.
Abstain.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
No.
Resolution 2023-40, resolution appointing the city prosecutor.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Abez Anderson.
Abstain.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes, and just let the audience know who it is.
James Butler.
Thank you.
Resolution 2023-41, resolution appointing alternate city prosecutor, James Carton.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Abez Anderson.
Abstain.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-42, resolution appointing city public defender, Matthew Sage.
Move it.
Second.
Second.
Councilmember Abez Anderson.
Abstain.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-43, a resolution appointing alternate public defender, Donald K. Greer.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Abez Anderson.
Abstain.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-44, resolution appointing Gregory B. Pasquale Esquire to serve as special tax counsel for the city and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional legal services associated therewith.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Abez Anderson.
Abstain.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-45, a resolution appointing the firm of Jean J. Anthony Esquire to serve as rent levelling board attorney for the city and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional services associated therewith.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Abez Anderson.
Abstain.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-46, a resolution appointing various firms to provide architectural services for the city and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional architectural services and authorizing the execution of an agreement for professional architectural services associated therewith. And the firms are DMR Architects, Netta Architects, and Akarian Iovino.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Abstain.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-47, a resolution authorizing the award of a contract to the firm of Ingenuity Infrastructure to perform special project engineering services.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Abstain.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-48, a resolution authorizing the award of a contract to the firm Dynamic Traffic LLC to perform special project engineering services.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Abstain.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-49, a resolution authorizing the award of a contract to the firm ARH, Inc. to perform special project engineering services.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Abstain.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-50, a resolution authorizing the award of a contract to VCOM LLC to perform telecommunications and 5G engineering services.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Abstain.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-51, a resolution appointing the firm CDM Smith Incorporated to perform special project engineering services.
Move it.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember.
You already had one, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Abstain.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-52, a resolution authorizing appointments to the Business Advisory Committee. The appointees are Deputy Mayor Amy Quinn, City Manager Donaviero, Jen Hampton, Bianca Frida, Kathy Kelly, Russell Lewis, Reggie Flimlin, Sylvia Sylvia Chapi, Austin Leopold, Robin Elliott Preston, Chris Zatorzki, David Lewis, Danny Croak, Amy Floss, Jean McNola, all with a term to expire December 31, 2023.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-53, a resolution authorizing appointments to the Community Development Block Grant Committee, Block Committee. The appointees are Mayor John Moore, Deputy Mayor Amy Quinn, Cassandra Dickerson, Lysia Floyd, all with a term to expire December 31, 2023.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution authorizing appointments to the Code Enforcement Quality of Life Committee. The appointees are Councilmember Yvonne Clayton, Councilmember Eileen Chapman, Patricia Zenalato, Diane Shelton, Pamela Major, John Scully, Lisa Bavino, and Marilyn Lazer Boston, all with a term to expire December 31, 2023.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-55, a resolution authorizing appointments to the Deal Lake Commission. The appointees are Jeannie Towor, Edward Winder, all with a term to expire December 31, 2023.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-56, a resolution authorizing appointments to the Environmental Shade Tree Commission. The appointees are Garrett L. Guyberson, Jim Henry, Tom Colisa, and Gerald List, all with a term to expire December 31, 2027.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-57, a resolution authorizing appointments to the Green Team. The appointees are City Manager Donaviero, or designee, Chairperson of the Environmental Shade Tree Commission, or designee, Chairperson of the Asbury Park Business Committee, or designee, Councilmember Eileen Chapman, Yvonne Adams, Derek Minow Blum, Kathleen Muma, Diane Pettit, Giuseppe Grillo, Barbara Kreizak, Jen Kosikowski, Joy Morgan, and Jana Manning, all with a term to expire December 31, 2023.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-58, a resolution authorizing appointments to the Parking Committee. The appointees are Mayor John Moore, Jean Delo, James Banano, Barbara Kreizak, William West, Jordan Modell, and Jill Potter, all with a term to expire December 31, 2023.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember.
I have a question. I had not had the opportunity to participate in some of the selections of the committees.
Okay.
So may I be able to be added to some of the committees at this time or later?
What do you want to do?
Yeah?
I would like to participate in the Parking Committee.
You're appointed.
Okay, thank you.
Will you permission Mayor, may I add her name?
The meeting's Wednesday at 5:30 here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There may be others, but I don't have them right now.
No.
We can appoint you at the next meeting. Decide what you want to be on. We'll appoint you at the next meeting.
Okay.
You leave some other appointees for the next meeting, too.
This one's good because the first meet, the first Wednesday of the month at 5:30 here.
Okay.
As a former member of Parking, Angela, I would be very carefully going on that one.
Okay.
It's gotten better.
So.
Thank you.
I have, Councilmember Clayton moved it. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yes.
With Ed and Angela.
Adding today or?
Today.
Today?
No, no, no. We'll wait until next time.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Listening to Deputy Mayor.
After Amy's comment, she may decide not to do it.
She's wise.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-59, a resolution authorizing appointments to the Participatory Budget Committee. The appointees are Councilmember Eileen Chapman, Joe Lucarelli, Chris Meniscallo, Jaclyn Sharp, Paul Weinstein, all with a term to expire December 31, 2023.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-60, a resolution authorizing appointments to the Planning Board. We have Class III member, Councilmember Yvonne Clayton, with a term to expire December 31, 2023. A Class IV members, Jennifer Souter with a term to expire December 31, 2026, and Daniel Shanomeo with a term to expire December 31, 2024. And then an alternate I member, Michael Goonan, with a term to expire December 31, 2024. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-61, a resolution authorizing appointments to the Public Arts Commission. The appointees are Malcolm Navias and Shayna LaBranch, with terms to expire December 31, 2025.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-62, a resolution authorizing appointments to the Recreation Committee. The appointees are Councilmember Eileen Chapman, Councilmember Angela Bez Anderson, Jesse Kendall, Jesse Ricks, Angeline Brown, Douglas Eagles, Shawna Gartrell, Taran Jordan, Esther Pikarsky, Vishal Sud, Sylvia Sylvia Chapi, all with a term to expire December 31, 2023.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution author, oh, sorry. Resolution 2023-63, a resolution authorizing appointments to the Rent Levelling Board. The appointees are Mary Ann Antonucci, Peter Siegel, and Derek Minow Blum, all with a term to expire December 31, 2023.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-64, a resolution authorizing appointments to the Sunset Lake Commission. The appointee is Councilmember Yvonne Clayton, with a term to expire.
Nope.
Councilmember Eileen Chapman.
Eileen Chapman.
Sorry. Councilmember Eileen Chapman with a term to expire December 31, 2024.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-65, a resolution authorizing appointments to the Mayor's Wellness Committee. The appointees are Mayor John Moore, Lisa Lee, Wendy Glassman, Allison Circo, Vishal Sud, Nina Summerlin, Pamela Major, Deborah Isola, Kathleen Melgar, Karen Moskowitz, James Rafone, Lilabeth Corales, and Destiny Smith, all with a term to expire December 31, 2023.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-66, a resolution authorizing appointments to the Zoning Board of Adjustment. The appointee is John Scully, with a term to expire December 31, 2026.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're now on to announcements by Mayor Moore of the appointment to the Library Board.
So there's a opening on the Library Board. It was a couple of months ago. And I appointed Jaclyn Sharp. Her term expired yesterday. So she's being appointed with a term to expire 12/31/2027.
Thank you. We're now on.
Then, position of Office of Emergency Manager and Director, Garrett M. Guyberson, term to expire 12/31/2023. Announcement of Planning Board, Class I member would be Mayor Ramirez Designee. So it would be myself with a term to expire 12/31/2023. A Class II member, non-government body municipal official, one-year terms would be James Banano with a term to expire 12/31/2023.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We're now on to comments from councilmembers. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Okay, well, first of all, Happy New Year. And I am excited to be here, to be working with Mayor and Council and our city manager and our attorney. But I want to thank all of you. I wouldn't be here if it hadn't been for you. And a lot of people knew my nickname, actually, was Princess Running Water because I cry all the time, especially when I'm happy. So I'm trying to hold back tears, but I just wanted to thank all of you for coming out today, supporting me, and my husband, my daughter, my son. I just am so appreciative of all of you. And I promise to do my very best as a council to work with our city manager, our mayor, and our council members, and to do what is in the best interest of you, the residents. So thank you for coming out today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Chapman.
So just to follow up on Angela's comments, I want to wish you all a happy and healthy New Year. And again, thank you all for coming out and supporting us, all of us as a council and a city. We always appreciate your feedback and your support. So the fact that you're all out on a New Year's Day morning is pretty impressive. So thank you, and please keep engaged, keep coming to these meetings. Happy New Year.
Thank you. Councilmember Clayton.
I just want to welcome Angela Bez Anderson to our council. We look forward to working with her and thinking that the future is going to be very bright for the city. And I just wish each and every one of you a very happy, healthy, and prosperous New Year because the best is yet to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Quinn.
I mean, everybody's really said what I've said. I want to thank my wife and son for continuing to be my biggest cheerleaders and everybody in the audience, Patricia, Jesse, and everybody for coming out. I want to thank all the residents. I want to welcome Angela. We are so happy to have you. I can't think of another council in Monmouth County that has four women running the show. And so the person who has feminist tattoos for their arm, that makes me really proud.
Sorry, Joe.
But thank you all. Thank everyone for coming out.
Thank you.
Four women running the show and a woman city manager, so.
Mayor Moore.
Before you said that, I was going to ask, is this the first council in Monmouth County that has something like this? And it probably is, and it's historic. Angela, welcome aboard. I'm sure you'll do fantastic. If I knew you could bring this type of weather, I would have put you on eight years ago. But again, best of luck. Any questions? You've had a great transition so far. Anything, feel free to call, feel free to reach out. I'm sure that goes to all the council people. Again, Happy New Year, best of luck, best of health to everybody in 2023. Let's hope 2023 is better than 2022 as far as like COVID viruses, everything else. If we don't go through that again, let's hope we get back to something fairly close to 2019. And again, we have some hurdles in front of us, but we'll take one step at a time. Like Angela and everybody else said, we will try to do the best for all the citizens of Asbury Park. Thank you.
Thank you. We're now on to public participation. May I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public participation portion is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone, state your name and address for the record. And there will be a three-minute time limit for each speaker.
I'm sorry. Hi, Carrie Butch, 500 Deal Lake Drive, Asbury Park, New Jersey. Welcome, Angela, and welcome to the new council. It's going to be a new council, right? A lot of the committees have not really changed that much. There's been a little bit of change, right, on some of them? What I want to know is about the CBDG Committee. Right now, it's an advisory committee to the mayor and council. And right now, the deputy mayor and the mayor are sitting there with two employees of the city. So might we reconsider that and maybe open it up to the greater community? So that's one thing I have. The other thing is the budget, Participatory Budget Committee is great, but we haven't had a budget committee that was put together by the city manager in many years, right? So would it be important to bring that committee back, the budget committee, since we have, I don't even know how much we have, but like a $60 million budget? So I think the participatory budget is an amazing opportunity, but we're dealing with $250,000. I think the community should really get a handle on where the entire budget is. So that's the other thing. And then I just want to say hello to Justin Freed. He's actually streaming live for asburyparkreporter.com. So if people want to see council meetings live, they're going to have the opportunity to do that on asburyparkreporter.com. We're going to be at every council meeting, and we're going to be hiring community people to do what he's doing today. So he's going to teach Asbury Park community members to livestream the council meetings. So it'll be a way for people to see that live and participate and engage. So my question is, will you reconsider the, maybe adding some folks to the CBDG Committee and also bring back the budget committee?
Is that it?
That's it. That's all.
The first one's an easy one. The applications are online. Nobody fills them out. So if you want to fill one out, fill one out. You start from there. Anybody else in TV land that's watching can also do that. As far as the budget committee, let us get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you.
As much as I said, CDBG, any committee is online. And we appointed people. There's vacancies on some committees, parking, others, because there's no applications. So if people submit applications, that's the first step. Thank you. Rita?
Hi, Rita Morano. Wait, there on you. I'm glad that Carrie's going to give some lessons on the council meeting because most of the new people in town come to tweak at the mic, and then they leave at the most important part, when all the money is being spent. And I just heard something in the oath that really struck me when Amy was taking the oath to authorize by the people. Well, I hope you're going to be more open about you, what you're doing because there was a few things that really weren't right last year, and I don't want to dwell on them. But I did want to congratulate everybody on their new titles or whatever. And the other thing I wanted to talk about was the bill resolution. That tells you everything about the city. And it should be hanging outside in City Hall where everybody could see it. But if it is there, it's under glass. And I was talking to Joanne about it. She said it's 200 and something pages. But people should pay attention to that because that's how you spend your money. And the other thing I wanted to say was, why do we need an engineer if we have a T and M? Why do we need another one? Aren't they getting enough money or what? I mean, what's the assistant engineer or whatever that title is? And you have a lot of payroll on what you did tonight, paying all those consultants? I think you'd better review that. That's not a good thing. You don't need consultants if you have the right department heads. They're supposed to be qualified to handle everything. I mean, maybe some things have to be legal, but other than that, what do you need consultants for all these things? Including one of them that was really ridiculous, the one about the, I can't think of it now. It's the one about the Rent Control Board. You hire lawyers for that? For what? If you follow your rules, I mean, that's what it is. What do you have ordinances for if you have to hire other people to tell you that your ordinance is good? I thought that's what ordinances were about. I don't understand why you need all these professionals. I really don't. And you don't need an insurance broker neither. I saw him on the list. Because we, when I was on the budget committee, we did investigate that. And you don't need a broker to get paid, nobody in between. You have to have somebody with some knowledge about insurance, and I'm sure we all do. We know what's right and what's wrong. All you need is common sense. We all have insurance policies. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, I'm going to start in reverse order. Insurance broker, say, every Board of Education, every town in New Jersey has one. It's not like, yeah, can I do my home insurance? Yeah, I pay a dowling from doweling, you know, insurance. But the insurance broker comes in and does training to prevent accidents, to lower the rates. And every year, they've lowered our rates dramatically and come and give us a check on top of that. So insurance brokers needed. Appointing alternate engineers, most towns do, because we may have Project X come up in August. And instead of just giving it to T and M, we can go out and give it to like three, and whoever comes up with the best price gets the job. So that's not unusual either.
That's good.
Okay, yeah. Consultants, consultants are appointed. They do not get paid unless they get, are told to do a job. So just because we hired a lot, and we hired, appointed, not hired, appointed three architects, that doesn't mean all three will get a dollar's worth of work this year. I would venture to say there's not a rent control board in the state of New Jersey that does not have a lawyer attending their meetings because it has to be done the right way. It appeals either by a renter or by the landlord, and the lawyer's there to make sure it's done the right way. And if you look at Mr. Anthony's bills, they were very, very low for 2022. So I think I hit all your questions, Rita.
Okay. I wish you good luck.
Thank you, Rita.
Thanks, Rita.
Anybody else like to be heard?
Hello, my name is Kevin Strickland. I live at 1109 Second Avenue, and I coach Little League Baseball in Asbury Park. And I just want to take a moment to welcome the new members and also to thank you for your historic support for Little League Baseball in Asbury.
Hold on a second. Okay, now give us your real name.
Coach Kringle.
You were at every Christmas event. You're the best-looking Santa Claus in the state, if not the country. Your attire makes Santa Claus's attire look shabby. But I mean, I cannot thank you enough for all you did this holiday season for the children, the residents, Little League, everybody in Asbury Park. Kevin, you're wonderful. You put in so many hours this holiday season. It's unbelievable. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Anybody else like to be heard? Motion to close.
Mayor. Mayor, could I just?
Oh, yeah.
It's okay. Just two things. First of all, congratulations to Councilwoman Bez Anderson. Congratulations to Mayor Moore, and looking forward to working with all the council members and Fred again and the staff this year. I think now that we're out of COVID, we can get back to business as normal. We have a lot of exciting things we're looking to do. And also, as a public safety announcement, parking is free outside until 1:30 for the meeting today. So should, and if you get a ticket by accident, please contact James Banano or myself, and we'll take care of it. So the parking is free until 1:30 this afternoon out in the municipal lot. Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Reg, did you want to say?
Yes, I'd just like to say Happy New Year to all and to thank the council for your reappointing me. It continues to be an honor and a privilege for me to serve you and the residents of the city of Asbury Park as your city attorney. And I would like to especially welcome Councilwoman Angela Bez Anderson, and I look forward to working with you in the year ahead. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to close, public? Do we have a second?
Okay, motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public participation portion is now closed. We are on to adjournment unless anyone has anything else.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.